I'm Attorney Gerald Griggs, First Vice President of the Atlanta Chapter of the NAACP. You've heard the history, the illustrious history of Atlanta. Whether it was Dr. Martin Luther King, Sr., whether it was John Dale Johnson, whether it was Julian Bar. Well, now you can be a part of making that next step in history by joining the Atlanta NAACP because we are on the forefront of movement. We've been on the forefront of movement for 100 years and we will change the shape of this city. So join us, our legacy of civil rights and the future of social justice. Join the Atlanta NAACP. We need you to be a part of the change.
I'm Richard Rose, President of the Atlanta NAACP. The Georgia NAACP needs a financial restructuring. I'm just the guy who can do it. We haven't had a financial report since 2014. I've been a CPA since I was 24 years old. I know I can do the job. I'm ready to do the job. I ask for your vote.
As part of the Vax Up Atlanta mission to get people vaccinated and stomp out misinformation about the vaccine, the Atlanta Branch of the NAACP partnered with the Pan-Hellenic Greater Atlanta Divine Nine for their annual 5K Walk Run. Over 600 people registered for this event and along with our many partners, including Fulton County COVID-19 Vaccinations Vax Up, we were able to vaccinate 45 adults and 15 young adults. This annual event held each year attracted people from all across the country. Way to go NAACP Atlanta, getting our people vaxxed up.
Hi, I'm Richard Rose, President of the Atlanta NAACP. We're standing here at Stone Mountain, Georgia, the largest shrine to white supremacy in the history of the world. All over the news today, we see that there's a big lie. The big lie is that Donald J. Trump claims that the election was stolen from him. But actually, the really big lie is about Stone Mountain, is about the Confederacy. The really big lie about the Confederacy, that the Confederate States of America was formed because of states' rights, because of tariffs. But in fact, the Confederate States of America was formed in order to have a country that maintained African chattel slavery. So where'd they get this idea from? They didn't have to go far because there was already a precedent. The precedent was Texas. Texas was a part of the country of Mexico, which had freed itself from Spain in 1821. And in 1829, the governor of Mexico said to those landowners in Texas, "You have to stop this slavery." It abhors slavery in all of its territories, which included Texas, which was really North Mexico. And so what Texas decided to do in 1834 was to separate itself. The landowners got together, brought arms to an army or rebellion, and they decided that they must separate from Mexico using the Rio Grande as its southern border in order to maintain the institution of African slavery. So the rest of the southern states didn't have to go far because Texas had separated itself in order to maintain African slavery. It joined the Union under the premise that they could continue enslavement of Africans in perpetuity. In perpetuity meaning the father, the sons, the wives, the daughters, and their sons and daughters. And so Texas joined this Confederate States of America. They were one of the first seven states that seceded from the Union in order to maintain chattel slavery, in order to maintain institutional slavery based on race, period. Their only rationale was race, and that was that they claimed that Negroes, that Africans, were inherently inferior to white people. So these Confederate States of America didn't have to go far. They had seen a precedent and they adopted this precedent. That is the big lie that continues today, perpetrated by the Sons of Confederate Veterans, by the United Daughters of the Confederacy, and at Stone Mountain, Georgia, the largest shrine to white supremacy in the history of the world.
The conservatives want to preserve the ways of the Old South. They want to preserve the rights of the police to take black lives unpunished, to shoot an unarmed, naked, black man claiming they thought he had a weapon. Prosecutors want to excuse white men who surround and murder a black jogger in their pickup trucks flying the Confederate flags, claiming citizens arrest. Show them that black lives do matter. Vote your voice. This message is brought to you by the NAACP Black Voter Turnout Collaborative.
How you doing? I'm Attorney Gerald Griggs, also known as a Justice Fighter, and I'm asking for your vote for State President of the Georgia State Conference of the NAACP. From Rayshard Brooks to Ahmaud Arbery, from Vincent Truitt to Park Cannon, from Stone Mountain to Decatur, we have been on the front lines fighting the Confederacy. But it's time for the Georgia State Conference to be on the front lines of the justice movement. And that's why I'm asking for your vote. We're not talking about the illustrious history of the past. We are focused on the history of today and the future. That's why we have to be on the front lines of justice, and that's why it's important that you vote for me as a state president. I'm Attorney Gerald Griggs. I humbly ask for your vote. I ask you to vote for unity, transparency, and accountability, but most importantly, justice. Vote for justice and Gerald Griggs as the President of the State Conference of the NAACP. I'm Attorney Gerald Griggs, and I approve this message.
In 2019, 15,633 more Americans died than in 2018. From 2019 to '20, the differential was 503,000. The leading black Georgia funeral home reported their business increased in 2020 by more than 30%. I am glad to have not been one of them. As soon as a proven vaccine was available, I took the shot. Each of the three vaccines on the market is more than 90% effective. One was developed by a black woman, Dr. Kizzi Corbin. Protect yourself, your associates, and your loved ones. Don't be in that funeral home statistic. I'm Richard Rose, President of NAACP Atlanta, which has championed civil rights since 1917. I vote, I'm active in my community, and I've been vaccinated. I urge you to join me in all three. Vax up, take the shot.
Hey, this is DC with the NAACP, out here today getting COVID tested and getting me
Hi, I'm Dee Miller with the NAACP Atlanta Branch, and we are out here doing voters registration today, all hands on deck with our community partners. We are registering people to vote. This is an important election. We need to make sure that the voters have their cards and that all the information is correct and coincides with their ID and just to meet the basic requirements for Senate VR 202.
Hi, I'm Dr. Lenora Coleman, President and Founder of Total Lifestyle Change and Healing Our Village. We were here today with the NAACP Atlanta, doing blood pressure checks, COVID testing, and COVID vaccinations. It's been a great event. We'll keep on our website, which is www.tlc-global.org for the next event.
Just got swabbed for COVID rapid test. It was easy, fast, and I enjoyed it. I'm negative, man. I just got my test results back. I'm negative. Now that I've tested negative, it's time to get the shot. I took it like a real champ.
Hey, this is Richard Rose, President of the Atlanta NAACP. Wish you would have been here today in Rodney Cook Junior Park. We had free vaccine for COVID. We got free testing. We got hot dogs and games for the kids. We got voter registration for the adults. It's been a great day. Come and join us on October 16th at Green Brown Mall at the Mason's Park Lot. We'll be doing it all over again.
As part of the Vax Up Atlanta mission to get people vaccinated and stomp out misinformation about the vaccine, the Atlanta Branch of the NAACP partnered with the Pan-Hellenic Greater Atlanta Divine Nine for their annual 5K Walk Run. Over 600 people registered for this event and along with our many partners, including Fulton County COVID-19 Vaccinations Vax Up, we were able to vaccinate 45 adults and 15 young adults. This annual event held each year attracted people from all across the country. Way to go NAACP Atlanta, getting our people vaxxed up.
How you doing? I'm Attorney Gerald Griggs, First Vice President of the Atlanta Chapter of the NAACP. You've heard the history, the illustrious history of Atlanta. Whether it was Dr. Martin Luther King, Sr., whether it was John Dale Johnson, whether it was Julian Bar. Well, now you can be a part of making that next step in history by joining the Atlanta NAACP because we are on the forefront of movement. We've been on the forefront of movement for 100 years and we will change the shape of this city. So join us, our legacy of civil rights and the future of social justice. Join the Atlanta NAACP. We need you to be a part of the change.
At a recent board meeting of the Stone Mountain Memorial Association, which is the governing body of Stone Mountain Park, a member of the Sons of the Confederate Veterans claimed that Stone Mountain Park is a memorial to the 50,000 Georgia soldiers who lost their lives in the war. That is another iteration of the big lie. The war against the United States of America was created, was started, in order to maintain the institution of African slavery, of chattel slavery based on race, alone. At this park, this is called the Historic Town Square, which includes slave cabins imported from somewhere in Georgia but were never here, never at Stone Mountain. It is to represent the idyllic view of antebellum South, to say, "This is how we want it to be. We want to return to the days where Africans were accorded second and third-class citizenship in America that included chattel slavery based on race in perpetuity."
Let me be frank. The conservatives want to preserve the ways of the Old South. They want to take us back before Brown versus Board of Education, before the Montgomery Bus Boycott, before the Birmingham Student Movement, before the Freedom Riders, and before the Selma March where John Lewis and others were brutalized. For 111 years, the NAACP has fought for your right to vote. Exercise that right. Vote your voice. This message is brought to you by the NAACP Black Voter Turnout Collaborative.
How you doing? I'm Attorney Gerald Griggs, and I'm humbly asking for your vote for President of the State Conference of the NAACP. But I'm not running alone. We need transparency in our financial responsibilities, and that's why I'm endorsing for Treasurer Richard Rose, who is currently the President of the Atlanta Branch. I think Richard has the know-how and the ability to bring transparency to our financial dealings. That's why I'm proud to say we're running as a slate. I would humbly ask you to vote for Richard Rose for Treasurer and for Attorney Gerald Griggs as the President of the Georgia State Conference. Together, we will bring transparency and accountability to the State Conference. Vote for us. Make sure you make that change in the Georgia NAACP.
In general, the offices and leaders of local NAACP branches serve without compensation. But there is a cost of everything, even if you don't pay it. We need offices and communication systems and materials and staff. They answer daily calls citing racial discrimination in the justice system, employment, health, and housing. Annual adult membership is only $30, but that's not enough. Please subscribe to one of our annual supporter packages starting at $100 that includes membership. We can do more if you join and support the Atlanta NAACP. Go to our website, naacpatlanta.org, or follow the link in this message. The community needs you and the NAACP. To my right, you see the largest shrine to white supremacy in the history of the world, the carvings on the side of Stone Mountain. But the Stone Mountain Memorial Association wants to dilute this message. There's a dinosaur land, there are golf courses, there's a boat ride on a huge lake, there are other attractions, including a skyride to the top of the mountain, all designed to dilute the message of white supremacy on which this mountain and this park is based on. Georgia bought this park in 1958 because it had been a meeting place, an annual rally point for the Ku Klux Klan, where they burned crosses and some say threw black people over the side of the mountain after having lynched them. This is Stone Mountain, the largest shrine to white supremacy in the history of the
The conservatives want to preserve the ways of the Old South. They want to continue to uphold police brutality, to maintain a system that traps black families in poverty. They cut funding for education and at the same time spend millions maintaining the white supremacy messaging of Confederate monuments. They mistreat us with our own tax dollars. Refuse to be mistreated. Show them that black lives matter. Vote your voice. This message is brought to you by the NAACP Black Voter Turnout Collaborative.
How you doing? I'm Attorney Gerald Griggs, and I'm humbly asking for your vote for President of the State Conference of the NAACP. But I'm not running alone. We need transparency in our financial responsibilities, and that's why I'm endorsing for Treasurer Richard Rose, who is currently the President of the Atlanta Branch. I think Richard has the know-how and the ability to bring transparency to our financial dealings. That's why I'm proud to say we're running as a slate. I would humbly ask you to vote for Richard Rose for Treasurer and for Attorney Gerald Griggs as the President of the Georgia State Conference. Together, we will bring transparency and accountability to the State Conference. Vote for us. Make sure you make that change in the Georgia NAACP.
Hey, this is DC with the NAACP, out here today getting COVID tested and getting me
Hi, I'm Dee Miller with the NAACP Atlanta Branch, and we are out here doing voters registration today, all hands on deck with our community partners. We are registering people to vote. This is an important election. We need to make sure that the voters have their cards and that all the information is correct and it coincides with their ID and just to meet the basic requirements for Senate VR 202.
Hi, I'm Dr. Lenora Coleman, President and Founder of Total Lifestyle Change and Healing Our Village. We were here today with the NAACP Atlanta, doing blood pressure checks, COVID testing, and COVID vaccinations. It's been a great event. We'll keep on our website, which is www.tlc-global.org for the next event.
Just got swabbed for COVID rapid test. It was easy, fast, and I enjoyed it. I'm negative, man. I just got my test results back. I'm negative. Now that I've tested negative, it's time to get the shot. I took it like a real champ.
Hey, this is Richard Rose, President of the Atlanta NAACP. Wish you would have been here today in Rodney Cook Junior Park. We had free vaccine for COVID. We got free testing. We got hot dogs and games for the kids. We got voter registration for the adults. It's been a great day. Come and join us on October 16th at Green Brown Mall at the Mason's Park Lot.
Hi, I'm Greg Fan and I am the President of the South for the Ministry Alliance and also the Chairman of the Vote Empowerment Collaborative. And we bring to you this night this political forum from the East Point City Councilman for those who are running and vying for returning back to their seat and others who are vying for an opportunity to serve on the council. So with that being said, I'm going to introduce Mr. Richard Rose, who is the President of the Atlanta NAACP, who is helping us co-sponsor this forum tonight. Mr. Rose?
Good evening, everybody, and thank you for joining us. First, thank these candidates for offering to give part of their life and service to their community. Public service is a, it is a sacrifice and want to acknowledge that. Excuse me. And thank everybody for watching. We hope this will be informative if you make your choice of voting. Voting is your voice in your community and we want to hear your voice loud and clear. Thank you so much.
Well, I wanted to now introduce our moderator for tonight. Her name is Kathy Adams. She is the Southern Regional Director of the National Federation of Democratic Women. She's the committed servant leader and the President Emeritus of the Georgia Federation of Democratic Women and previously Chair at the Delta Airlines Information Technology Learning and Career Center, a member of the Data Sigma Theta Sorority in East Point, Georgia and College Park, an alumni chapter where she serves as Chair of the Social Action Committee. She's a board member of Atlanta Victim Assistant and Fulton County Democratic Party Postholder. She is a grandmother, mother, grandmother, and she's a member of Cascade United Methodist Church. And she is one who loves the Lord and definitely understand politics. My friend Kathy Adams.
Well, thank you so much, Greg, for that warm introduction. Hello, everyone. Greetings and welcome to the Candidates Forum for the City of East Point. We have a lot in store for this evening. We have a lot of candidates that are vying for the city council seats. And what we'd like to do is we're offering up a platform to hear from those candidates. We want you to get engaged, know who you're getting ready to elect. Make sure that you have a clear understanding as to what their visions and their views and their values are before you go to the polls. Because we know today was the first day of early voting. So we want to make sure that you are well-educated and equipped when you go and cast your ballot. So without further ado, let me give you a little bit of information about the overview for this evening. We have four panelists who are joining us this evening and I am going to introduce them just shortly. Each of those panelists will ask two to three questions of the candidates, but only the candidates in their respective wards. So for example, if panelist number one represents Ward C, he can only ask questions, he or she can only ask questions of the candidates in Ward C, not in any other ward. So we're not going to cross-pollinate. So just ask those questions of the candidates and their respective ward that they represent. And furthermore, we'll move on and we'll allow the candidates to introduce themselves. Let me give you a little bit of the guidelines for this evening. Each candidate will have one and a half minutes for an opening statement. Each candidate will give, they'll have two minutes to respond to each of the questions and the questions will be asked in random order. Each candidate will have 30 seconds to respond to rebuttal if and only if their name is called by another candidate. And then each candidate will be given two minutes to provide their closing statement. Is that okay? Everybody got that? Okay. Well, let's go ahead and get started. Without further ado, I am going to go ahead and introduce our panelists for this evening. Representing Ward A is Carl Simeon. Mr. Simeon, if you will, just raise your hand a little bit so we know who you are. There you go. Mr. Simeon is a commercial broker and a CEO of Simeon Global Investments LLC. They specialize in office and retail commercial real estate. But he also serves as an agent leadership, serves on the Agent Leadership Council and he's a graduate of Southern University and a member of Phi Beta Sigma Fraternity Incorporated. Welcome, 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 Mr. Simeon. Representing Ward B is Joel Tucker. Mr. Tucker, you don't wave your hand? There you go. Mr. Tucker has worked 20 years on the EEOC and the Employment Rights Claims Boards. He's a current resident, well, he's a current member of the City of East Point's Planning and Zoning Commission and a former member of the Ethics Commission and a host of other boards and commissions in the City of East Point. He's also a graduate of the University of South Alabama. Everyone, welcome, Mr. Tucker. Representing Ward C is Kristen Jackson. Kristen has been a resident of East Point for the past 11 years. She's a Site Director of Horizons Atlanta at Woodward Academy, serves on the Business Industrial Development Authority and the East Point Main Street Association. Her guiding principle in life is growth through service to others. Everyone, welcome, Kristen. Kristen, did you raise your hand? And then lastly, we have representing Ward D, Erica Dean. Erica, I want to raise your hand. There you go. Erica has served as the State Director of the National Association of Working Women and she's currently the National Organizing Director of the United for Respect. Erica has a passion for organizing young people and building power in marginalized communities. Everyone, welcome, Erica. So there you have it. Those are our four panelists. I will call on them in random order and they will, and then we'll ask questions of each of the candidates in random order. You will also hear our chime, our bell. And so we do have a timekeeper. If you will play that chime again.
Okay, I have to, let me see.
Okay, well, we'll do that in just a moment. There you go, there you go. So when you hear, when you hear that chime, you need to wrap it up and bring it home. So if you hear it twice, that means you're going to be muted the second time. We have 15 seconds remaining. You'll hear the first chime. The second chime is the end and you will be muted. So we just had another candidate to join. We have, looks like Tremaine Mitchell and she's going to get all teed up, I guess, in just a moment. But without further ado, I'm going to go ahead and allow the candidates to introduce themselves. But let me just share this with you. You know, this evening, again, we don't take this lightly. You know, we have people who are vying to serve as, they've offered themselves, their families and their careers to serve as a public servant to help govern the City of East Point. These council seats, there are 12 candidates who are running for these four council seats. And you know, we have a couple of incumbents here who are running for their seats again and who have been, who have opposition. So we want you to hear each of the candidates. Do know that all 12 candidates on the slate have been invited to this forum to participate in the forum. The people that you see on the camera tonight participating in this forum are the ones who chose to attend. So you figure out the rest. So we will go ahead and get started. And I have another, it looks like Tremaine Mitchell has re-entered the forum again. Without further ado, I'm going to go ahead and start with Ward A. And I will call on Councilwoman Sharon Shropshire. If you will, go ahead and introduce yourself and you have one and a half minutes, please.
Thank you. My name is Sharon Shropshire and I'm your current Ward A at-large Councilmember. I am a native of Atlanta, Georgia. I've been in East Point for 36 years. I have two sons. I have been fighting for the residents since, for about 15 years. And I have been fighting for, for better for them because everybody deserves equal. And I will continue to fight once reunited for the residents of East Point. Thank you.
Thank you so much and we certainly appreciate that. Next, we have representing Ward B, Councilwoman Karen Renee. Councilwoman.
Thank you. Good afternoon, everybody, and welcome to our great City of East Point. I am Councilwoman Karen Renee. I've been serving since 2014. I am from native from Selma, Alabama. Graduate from Alabama State University with a PhD in a law, in a law degree from the Great School of Atlanta Law School. I have been in East Point since 2002. I am committed to working with our residents at large across this great city and I would like to continue to work for the families and the residents here. I am running because I think that I am one of the best candidates for Ward B. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Next, we have candidate Shontay McLaughlin, representing Ward B. Ms. McLaughlin.
Good evening. My name is Shontay McLaughlin. I'm a graduate of Georgia State University with a degree in Journalism and I heard Mr. Tucker joke about a hip-hop video. My background is the music industry. And I've also worked in public policy for almost 20 years now, working with Senator Donzella James, consulting on health and well-being. I've worked on Rob Pitt's campaign, Shayna Rook's, several other people's campaigns. And I am committed to making a difference in East Point. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have candidate T-Star Cummings, representing Ward C.
Good evening, everyone, and thank you for this opportunity. My name is T-Star Cummings and I am running for Ward C at-large. And let's see, I was born and raised in southwest Atlanta. I'm a product of Atlanta Public Schools, graduated from Missoula High School. I received my undergraduate and my graduate degree from Waldorf University. I've always had a passion to serve. I have, that passion has always, it's been fulfilled with Atlanta Fire Rescue Department where I've been there for 21 years now. I'm a resident of East Point. I've been here for 11 years. And like I said, I've always had a passion to serve. This, the fire department afforded me that opportunity every single day that I put that uniform on. I think that East Point is a great community. I mean, it's so, it's unlimited potential for growth and I just want to continue to be that servant leader to continue to move the city of East Point forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have a candidate and it's a Councilman, Joshua Butler. He's representing Ward D.
Well, first of all, I would like to thank the NAACP. I'd like to thank you, Ms. Adams, and thank Bishop Fan. I have been to two of these forums now and every forum, the people running against me want to make it about me as, but it's not about me. It's about the people of East Point. And when you're considering who you're going to vote for, I'm going to ask that you ask these candidates one question. Where were you when it was time to feed the hunger in East Point? I and my colleagues have served over eight million pounds of food. Where were you when we were passing out shoes to the babies in the, in Montel Homes? It's about the $15 million in road work we have done for the City of East Point. Where were you last week when I went to Jefferson Park to hear about clean air? And I found out about it on Facebook. You could have been there too. Where were you? It's not about me. It's always about the people of East Point. Erica, where were they when we were out there to 12:30 at night fighting for voter rights? I am Joshua B. Butler IV. I have been here doing the work for East Point and I have been here. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Councilman. Next, we have Mark Fields, representing Ward D. Mr. Fields.
Hi, and thank you for the NAACP and Mrs. Adams and Bishop Fan. I appreciate the time, the opportunity for us to speak directly to the people. My name is Mark Fields. I'm running for City Council Ward D at-large. I have been in East Point for a little over 22 years. I've been employed with Delta Airlines as an instructor and flight attendant for 28 years, a little over 28 years. And when I moved to East Point, I got involved right away. I've been President of our Washington Road Neighbors Association for 10 years, Vice President for two. I worked as the, on the Building Authority for the City of East Point for eight years. And, and I'm a CASA, Court Appointed Special Advocate. So I've been involved and to answer that question directly, maybe you didn't see me because we were doing, with our Neighborhood Association, we were doing food giveaway and clothes giveaway to Aces Hill Your School in Brookview. And so at the end of the day, we are in the community. I have been in the community and many of the things that Ward D are happy to have right now is because of the fight for the Washington Road Neighbors Association. And I'll just finally say this. You need someone in the office who's honest, someone who has integrity and someone who's not going to beat their chest and say, "I did it", but work with the entire council to make things happen for the City of East Point and for the residents of East Point. Thank you for your time.
Thank you so much, Mr. Fields. Next, we have Tremaine Mitchell. And I want to remind everyone, we have a couple of latecomers. If you are not speaking, put your phones on mute, please. It'll just kind of help us with the background noise. Thank you so much. Mr. Mitchell. You are on mute and want to make sure that you heard the guidelines. You have one and a half minutes for your opening statement.
Okay, hi, my name is Tremaine Mitchell. First, I'd like to thank you guys for the invite to this forum. But I am a lifelong resident of East Point, born and raised. My family has a very rich history of serving the great city of East Point that goes back generations. Started with my grandmother Shirley Mitchell. She raised hundreds of East Point youth and future community leaders as a career as Director of East Point Child Developmental Center in Montreal Homes, where she helped to provide affordable childcare to the community. And she stood on four pillars, which I champion, which RTC, clothe, educate and protect our community. And it was her contagious love for the City of East Point that was passed along to my father, Clyde Mitchell, who instilled those same values in morals in me. It was through his, he was actually afforded the privilege of serving on the East Point City Council for many terms, a couple of terms. And as a child, I was able to leave my immediate surroundings and travel to different corners of East Point, meet with citizens from every ward and learn about the problems and issues that played in their community. But I am a, I did graduate from South Carolina State with a bachelor's in biology and chemistry. I proceeded to get my master's in public health policy with a specialization in epidemiology and I'm currently working on my doctorate in public health, doctorate in public health policy. I currently serve as a Senior Epidemiologist for the CDC, which I think brings us to the present. So I love to see East Point and its great residents. However, we do need a fresh perspective in leadership to attain a solid vision of citywide.
Thank you so much. Okay. And lastly, we have, we're going to circle back to Elijah Banks. And Mr. Banks, I know you joined us a little late, but want to give you an opportunity to introduce yourself and you do have a minute and a half for your opening statement.
My name is Elijah Banks. I'm an accountant. I moved to the City of East Point in 2017, right after graduating college at Pennsyl State. I believe that East Point gets its time for change and I believe that change is possible when leaders listen and listen to their constituents willing to do the work more. I believe that change is possible when we're hopeful about our future and knowing that optimism is possible. Again, East Point, I believe that- Again, East Point, I believe that it's our time for change. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Now, ladies and gentlemen, you've heard, um, the opening statement of each of the candidates that has joined us this evening. Let me just give you a rundown of the attendance, um, of who we have on, uh, participating in the forum. Again, as I mentioned previously, we have twelve candidates that are vying for four seats. Representing Ward A, we have, um, Councilwoman Sharon Shropshire and Elijah Bankston. Those two candidates are here with us this evening. Representing Ward B is Councilwoman Karen Renee and Shontae McLaughlin. Those two candidates are here with us this evening. Representing Ward C is T-Star Cummings. She is here with us this evening. And representing Ward D is Councilman Joshua Butler and Mark Fields and Tremaine Mitchell. Those three, uh, candidates are here with us this evening. So, you will hear from them. We will ask questions of them in random order, and our panelists will, um, uh, have those questions already, uh, set, red, set and ready to go. I'm gonna call on, um, Joel Butler to ask the first question. Uh, Joel represents Ward B, and, uh, just as a reminder, each of the panelists, whatever, uh, ward that they represent, they can only pose their question to the candidates in that respective ward. And, uh, Mr. Butler, if you will, I, I'm sorry, Mr. Tucker, if you will, because you represent Ward B, your questions will go to the candidates in Ward B. And, um, if you will, go ahead and pose the first question, please.
Thank you, Ms. Adams. Uh, I wanted to start off by thanking Bishop Fan and the NAACP for inviting me to, uh, participate tonight. Uh, the first question would be, the perception of some East Point residents is that Haightville and College Park have done a better job in rejuvenating their downtown areas by attracting businesses, restaurants, the development. Uh, do you think East Point has done a good job reaching its full potential? If so, why? And if not, why?
Um, I think that there's growth, um, to be done, especially in our downtown Commons area. We just secured all the titles, uh, to complete or to start the work for the downtown Commons district. Uh, it has been a challenge to acquire some of the titles, uh, for all of the properties. We, we wanted to make sure when we started this process that we were able to do a comprehensive and-
Councilwoman, I think your screen just froze.
Uh, more of, is that me?
No, go ahead.
Okay, I'm sorry. Um, more comprehensive, um, of all of the properties that was needed to make sure that we included a green space and, um, a diverse downtown district. And so, we have already started meeting with, uh, some developers to help us, uh, with the design phases on the downtown district area. And I, and, and truly, uh, one of the things that East Point was known for was retail space. And so, uh, a lot of the restaurants that wanted to come into the East Point downtown district, uh, found it very costly to redo some of the spaces in East Point, when you have to do the, uh, the cooling spaces and the heating and the venting and all of those kind of things. So, we're having some challenges with those, uh, spaces. Unlike College Park, when you look at College Park, you look at if the residents or the residents, uh, the restaurants move out, a new restaurant move in. And so, those challenges have not been faced with the College Park District downtown. Haight, Haightville, starting, uh, overall together, and they're all moving the needle. But we, as a, a council, we have been really trying very hard to make sure that we do this thing and we get it right, uh, as we move forward. And thank you.
Thank you so much. Uh, and next, I'm gonna pose that question to, uh, uh, the candidate, uh, Shontae McLaughlin.
So, I believe that with the downtown Commons, um, I think that the space could be beautified. But I don't think that there needs to be more of a retail space like Haightville and College Park. East Point's growing so fast that it's losing some of its small-city charm. Like, I moved to Atlanta when I was seventeen years old, and I am forty-two years old now. And I remember when East Point was a totally different city. However, one thing about East Point is it's always had a small-city charm. Now, we have Camp Creek Marketplace. We have, um, we do have some great, where Thumbs Up and VGR and, um, Cupcakeery, some of the restaurants that I frequent on a regular, are, there are some restaurants down there. And it's a safe space if you want to take a walk. Like, there are some things that can be done, like movie in the park and things like that. And I actually liked the concept of when there were the concerts in the park. I don't like the concept that they were done in the midst of COVID. However, the concept was great. So, it's like, there's plenty of things that could be done down with the downtown Commons without it becoming retail space when there's already over fifteen hundred small businesses in the city of East Point alone.
Thank you so much. Next, I'm gonna move to Ward D and ask, uh, Erica Dean, if you will, ask the next question. Um, if you will ask the question, I will select the candidate that, uh, that goes to.
Absolutely. Thank you, uh, NAACP for hosting this. Um, as a Ward D resident, I am actually honored to, um, have this conversation with, uh, my future councilperson. Um, so the first question would be, uh, there is definitely a greater need amongst elected officials and their constituent constituencies for transparency. Um, for Ward D, what is your plan to increase that, uh, transparency and conversations between the constituents and you as the, um, elected official?
Mr. Mitchell, are you still online with us?
Yes, I'm still here.
Okay. All right. That question is for you.
Sure. So, um, thank you for the question. First, I think we need to increase accountability. Um, we also need to look at the, what systems we do have in place to, uh, open, to make sure everyone is being transparent. So, there are things going on. I'm not sure, you know, how, how so, certain things are even, are, are even legal. Uh, but we do need to increase our communication between our oversight leadership. Make sure that they're on task, make sure that they're vigilant for, uh, conflicts of interest and things of that nature. We need to increase, um, e- even through, even through newsletters and community meetings. We need to make sure that we're present, make sure that, um, we hold our leads accountable, uh, and there are any discrepancies that we need to follow up on the, on these types of, um, issues.
Thank you very much. Ms. Dean, if you will, ask the next question, please.
Yes. Um, if elected, what is, what are some of your, um, out-the-gate hundred days in, uh, things you would like to have accomplished?
Okay. That question will go to, uh, Mr. Fields.
Uh, thank you, Ms. Dean, for the, the question. Uh, right away, the things that, that there are two things in particular that are, uh, that most residents are talking about. And the first one is around the permitting. Um, I understand that we do have permitting for our, uh, contractors and for residents when they want to do, uh, remodeling around their home. I understand that we put a new system in. The problem is, once you put a new system in, you also have to do the testing and all of the legwork before to ensure that it is functional. And if you did not do that, then it is, the, the new system is no better than the old sys- system that you left. Uh, so, I, I think the first thing that we need to do is get a handle on how do you mitigate and solve the problems of this new system for permitting? Uh, make sure that we have, uh, costs that are not prohibitive for both contractors and our residents, uh, and, uh, ensure that we are, uh, doing the best for our city. The second thing, uh, is come up with a comprehensive plan that really does make sense for the Commons area. That is where we integrate everyone. Every ward has a beautiful little culture to itself, but the downtown is where we all go and co-mingle, and, and we need to figure out how do we make sure that everyone is invited to that space?
Thank you so much. Next thing, I'm gonna move to Ward A. Mr. Simeon, if you will, ask the first question, please.
I'm sorry, Ms. Adams. Do I get a question?
We're gonna come back. We'll do, do that in our random order.
Thank you, uh, Ms. Adams.
Uh-huh.
For the candidates, Ward A, of course, uh, you know, I'm gonna ask an economic question, uh, I mean, commercial real estate. So, uh, what's more important for our city right now? Uh, building new homes and commercial space, uh, rehabbing, expanding, better utilizing our homes and storefronts, and why?
Councilwoman Shropshire.
What's more important? Um, building homes in new space as well as building our downtown for business. Um, we want affordable homes, and we want people to come live here. So, we are constantly building, we're constantly, um, having builders to come in to develop mixed use for our homes. That gets us, that brings our property value. That brings us taxes for our property value, taxes into the city. The second part is building up our downtown for business, because we gotta have things here to keep our residents here. So, we have to have the businesses, the restaurants, the mom, the pops, the activities, the amenities, that's gonna bring people here and want to stay here. So, the important thing is building homes as well as bringing business here to keep those residents here that come here and want to stay and live here.
Thank you so much. I'm gonna mix it up a little bit, and I'm gonna go to Ward C, Ms. Jackson, Christian Jackson, if you will, ask the next question, please.
Um, hi there, um, and thank you all so much for having me here. Um, so, my question for Ward C is, um, I know that our, um, candidate who's running for Ward C right now, um, I know that she is active in the community service in Atlanta Public Schools. Um, but what are your plans to support the schools here in East Point and the students and their families, um, especially Tri-Cities?
Okay, thank you for that question. Um, it's a very good question. Uh, with regards to what we plan on doing, what I think we need to do first of all is we need to, um, have some mentorship programs, um, placed in all of the schools. I know Tri-Cities was recently, um, in the news for a series of, um, um, fights that, that continue to go on at the school. And I think we need to, number one, um, look at the, the root of the problem. We need to, because I mean, it does, it truly takes a village. We need to make sure that, um, parents involved as well as these students. We need to look at mentorship programs. Um, one of the things that, um, I'm looking at establishing is, uh, it's a program that I have. It's called PSL, which is our Public Safety Athletic League. What we'll do is we'll take members from Public Safety, our police, our EMS and fire. They'll, um, start, they'll start these athletic leagues, um, back up, and it'll give the kids something to do. It also offers a mentorship, um, programs as well. Uh, I think one of the things that a lot of, a lot of these kids, they're lacking the guidance that they need today. But aside from the mentors, we also need to make sure that we keep the parents involved, um, as well. Um, another thing that we also want to look at doing is, um, um, summer work programs, um, for our youth. Um, there are a, a ton of, um, grant programs out, um, that have, uh, that, that will provide, um, salaries for these, for the students. We can look at our Tri-City School especially, and, um, in the summertime, what we'll do is we'll take all of those kids and we'll put them into the city. There'll be in all divisions of labor, um, in the city. We'll put them in parks and rec. We'll put them in, um, utilities. We'll put them down in the court buildings and administrative capacities at police and fire. What we'll do is we'll have those kids start to work in those jobs where they'll have, where we won't have to worry about them, um, out on the street selling the bottled, bottled water, which I know is an issue, um, throughout the city. And, uh, with these, these programs, what it does, it'll give them a segue, and it'll lead them into, um, possible gain for employment. And that may be something that they may choose to do in case they decide not to go to college or even go to the military after high school. I think it's, um, excellent opportunity, um, for our kids that are given that guidance, and, uh, it'll give them that guidance that they need. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, I'm gonna move to Ward D. Ms. Dean, if you will, ask the next question.
Absolutely. Um, so, there's been a lot of conversation and chatter around, uh, the violence that's at Camp Creek Marketplace, um, sharing responsibility some East Point, some city of Atlanta. But as the elected councilperson for Ward D, how do you propose creating a community-centered plan to address the, um, issue at Camp Creek Marketplace?
That question will go to Councilman Butler.
Thank you, Ms. Adams, and excuse me, but, uh, I didn't, I was a little confused.
That's okay.
So, Ms. Clemens, Dean, that's a great question. And let me tell you about what I have done and what the council has done for the Camp Creek Marketplace. As we all know, there were children migrating from the movies ATL to the Target. And then one of those evenings, a young lady was shot. And so, at that point, the council instituted this eight-week program to curb the violence. But this is what I did correctly. Because of my relationship with Sheriff Pat LaBott, I called the sheriff in conjunction with the city manager and asked for additional police help in that area. And since we did that, we have not heard of one incident of crime in that area. Addition to that, in addition to that, I, I start this, but it was already started, but I made sure I helped to keep it going. We have a multi-jurisdictional relationship with Marcy Overstreet in Atlanta, with Bill Elwes and Carmelita Gumps in the city of South Fulton, and their police departments, so that we can curb all of this crime that's going in to South Fulton, the city of Atlanta, and East Point. And so, did you hear about the time that Park, Target burned down with the George Floyd? You didn't hear about it because it didn't happen. Because when those people were on the phone talking about coming to East Point, I got on the phone with our, um, with Fred Gardner, our city manager. We got all of those municipal police departments involved, and we protected our most valuable asset, the Camp Creek Marketplace. So, yes. And then finally, I truly believe in restorative justice. So, my future plan is to work with Keith Gamish, the solicitor, and work with our new DA, Fonny Willis, to try to get some outlet for these kids. Because it's not enough to just lock them up and to police them. We must have restorative justice options.
Thank you so much for that. Next, we're gonna circle back to Mr. Simeon. You will ask the next question, please.
Kathy, uh, this is a candidate for Ward A. Uh, if someone came to you with a proposal to build a new piece of public infrastructure in our city, whether it's road, bridge, et cetera, how would you evaluate whether or not the project was worth implementing?
Mr. Bankston.
Yes, so if someone came to me and wanted to build a public infrastructure, one, it is first, if it's worth implementing, is first understanding and listening to the community to see what the community desires in that regard. And then it is listening to the community that you make the assessment based on, uh, if that project is worth implementing. I think that, uh, getting community involvement is important in any implementation, uh, big project. So, that's how I move for, first thinking about the community, uh, getting my listening ears to the community, and then, and then assessing from there. But community involvement is for sure important. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Next thing, I'm gonna move to, um, Mr. Tucker, Ward B.
Thank you, Ms. Adams, uh, for the Ward B candidates. Uh, the question would be, uh, the city of East Point operates as a city, uh, manager form of government, where a city manager is hired by council to manage the city. Uh, I believe the sitting city manager is the longest we've had in the twenty years I've been here. My question is, do you believe the city manager is doing a good job, and if so, why? And if not, why?
That question will go to, uh, Ms. McLaughlin.
So, to be honest with you, I've never met the current city manager. And that's, it's kind of unfair to say if they're doing a good job or not doing a good job without doing an accurate assessment of its team. You know, although there is a city manager, you're nothing without your team. So, without knowing who the team is, without knowing what structures are in place, what structures have been in place over the last twenty years, um, I know that there's a couple of, um, I know that there have been complaints from the police. I've had a couple of conversations with some of the police officers about, um, not feeling safe. So, I don't know if that's the direct to the city manager or to, um, just the structure of everything when it comes to the team. Um, when it comes to this current city council, when it comes to the mayor, like, everyone has to work together collectively. So, the city manager only has so much power. Although he has the title of city manager, without the collective, there's only so much that can and cannot be done. So, uh, without having a one-on-one personal conversation, it would be very biased and unfair of me to say, yes, he's doing a good job, or no, he's doing a terrible job, because without knowing his team, I don't know. So, that is my answer to you. I do not know.
Thank you very much. Next, I'm gonna move to Ward D. Uh, Ms. Dean, if you will, ask the next question, please.
Yes. Um, so, Ward D houses probably the largest amount of apartment, um, home, apartment people, renters, um, in the city of East Point. What is your plan to, one, engage those, uh, renters and try to assist them or move them into more legacy residents? Apartment, um, renters are, tend to be a lot more transient. Um, what is your plan to engage those residents as well as, um, having conversations around affordable housing for the city of East Point?
Mr. Fields.
Thank, thank you for the question. Uh, firstly, I'll say that, uh, maybe there's a, there's a slight misconception of- Thank, thank you for the question. Firstly, I'll say that maybe there's a, there's a slight misconception of who renters are. I work for Delta Airlines, I'm an instructor, and right now we are hiring flight attendants, and many of those young folks who are coming are, are coming into the city of East Point and moving into our apartments, which means they have a stable job, which means they have an income, and maybe their income is not at sixty or seventy or eighty thousand dollars, but in a few years it will be. So what do we, what should we do? We should start engaging our young, our young folks and people who are living in apartments right now, ensure and find out if they in fact do want to have a single-family home or townhouse or condo. And, and then we should start actively working to keep them here in the city of East Point. How do we do that? Young folks need some incentives to be able to, to, to go into a different living space. Many of our young people don't want to live in a single-family home, so that's why that mixed use is so important, to be able to transition them from a, an apartment to something that they own. Because we know that homeownership anchors our residents to East Point. And then I'll finally say that if you want to engage our, our residents in, in the apartments, social media, texts, and cellphone is a way to stay connected with many of our young people who are living in apartments.
Thank you very much. Next, I'm gonna move to Ward C, Ms. Jackson, next question, please.
So I've heard it already on this forum, a lot about growth, development, keeping up with College Park, keeping up with Haightville. But I also know that without like a clear city and government vision, we end up with gentrification that harms legacy residents, harms residents that aren't making that middle-class or upper-middle-class income. What are your plans for sustainable and equitable growth in East Point?
Ms. Cummings.
All right, here we go. All right, great question. I know that's a big thing, just pretty much all over the United States, we have gentrification, it's pretty much taking place everywhere. One of the hot-button topics here is affordable housing. What are we gonna do to make sure that people are able to continue to afford houses? The prices of homes, I moved to East Point eleven years ago. And it's, it's amazing for what I purchased my house for eleven years ago, what is the, what the value is said now. So what we need to do is we need to continue to, we need to have incentive programs put into place. We need to also to encourage people to move to, move to the city of East Point and make this place their home. We also need to, we partner with organizations such as Habitat for Humanity, because I know the thing is, you need to make sure that the, that the income fits, that we need, we need to make sure that the people are able to afford these homes that are being built all over the city of East Point now. So organizations like Habitat for Humanity, we need to look at our Officer Next Door programs to bring our public safety workers, our police, fire, EMS, schoolteachers, that we can bring them back into the community to help, to, to, to build our revenue, our tax base. So I think we have to look at, we have to look at different programs that will promote affordable housing. Look at different programs that, I'm sorry, look at different programs that, that help to support affordable housing in the city of East Point. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you very much. Next, I'm gonna move to Ward A, Mr. Simeon, if you will ask the, the next question, please.
Hey, great, thanks Kathy. Two major things that make people want to come to a city is security and education. So if elected, what are some of your sort of detail, you know, in synopsis, detailed plan of to make the education well worth it, as well as someone feeling safe?
Councilwoman Shropshire.
Thank you. First, let me answer the question on the education. Education is very important. And that is one of the reasons why people move to a city is because of education. We work with our school board, our school board, they were supposed to tear down one of the elementary schools, but we work with them to rebuild the school, because that's what was promised to the, to the resident, to the, the parents, the residents. We as council have to work with our elected school board members to make sure that when they're selecting or hiring teachers, that they put the best quality teachers in these schools to help our kids. Because our kids in some schools are lagging behind, and they need the best. And I know that there are great teachers in East Point who are helping these kids, but it also starts at home as well. We have to get the parents more involved in school with PTA and other things that will help their kids and that will help the school get to where they need to be. So that's the first step. For security, our police, our crime is down, which is a good thing. And we have provided the police with the tools and what they need to continue to do their jobs. And we'll continue to do that because we want our residents to feel safe. We've put cameras in our parks, we've put, we have cameras going into school zone, we have shot spotters. So there are many things that we have put in place to help the situation, to make people feel safe, and to make people want to come and live in East Point. So if they were to come and they look at the crime stat and they will see that our crime is down versus other cities, when they look at the schools, we have to continue to work with the school board as well as the school to make sure that our kids are getting what they need in education. And as well as teaching the parents or talking to the parents to get them more involved in the school and more involved in their child's education.
Thank you so much. Next, I'm gonna move to Ward D, Ms. Dean, if you will please ask the next question.
Yes, so for some years now, there has been constant, constant conversation on Ward D doesn't have a park. This was supposed to be Ward D's park, that place was supposed to be Ward D's park. As a resident, I'm definitely interested in how do we talk about solutions for now? While you work with your peers to figure out where the proper park should be in Ward D, but what can we do now for solutions to help our Ward D children to be participants in East Point community?
Mr. Mitchell. Next, that question is for you.
So I grew up in our Parks and Rec system, but it was a very robust Parks and Rec system that we had some national claim teams. I know you got to meet children and from all over East Point. So there was a fellowship aspect to Parks and Recs, there's also a discipline and structure in Parks to, to, to Parks and Recs. Ward D is, we don't have a park or recreation center, but I know we were definitely, I grew up swimming. We're trying to get an aquatic center. So just reaching out to our stakeholders, we can try to build our public-private partnerships, identifying land, I know there are a couple places we would love to put, we have to put a park in Ward D. But it just goes back to after-school programs, keeping our children focused, giving them opportunities. I remember growing up, Jefferson, at Jefferson Gym, there were many after-school programs where they taught skills, like speed, reading, math, you know, how to cook. There, there were different aspects of of education that could be gained from this one, starting after-school programs, giving our kids structure. That will also help with reducing crime. They can learn skills to make them more attractive in job markets, so we can, you know, if they're not in the middle class, can reach up toward making those types of salaries between forty and eighty, and just keeping our kids occupied.
Thank you very much. Mr. Tucker, next question, please.
Thank you, Ms. Adams. So in, in the Asian era of defund police, what are your views on defund police? And do you think East Point is doing enough to curb crime, retain police officers, and recruit new ones?
Councilwoman Renee, that question is for you.
Thank you, a, a great cut question. No, I, I don't believe in defunding the police, that, 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 I don't think that should be an option. In fact, I think that we need to increase police officers' benefits. And we just did that with the insurance for our first responders to give them, to make it more competitive than cities that are around us. And we will continue to do so. We, we will increase more police officers as we continue to grow in our city. I think another thing that should be added to the police department, I think we should add our social workers to our police department. And the reason why is because a lot of our police, police officers are not able to, are handling a lot of things, and I think we're overtaxing a lot of policing across this country. They're not able to deal with a lot of the mental health issues that are going on. And I think social workers could be another tool in our toolbox to help deal with a lot of things that are being addressed. As I talked with police officers, not just in East Point, but across the state of Georgia, especially in my hometown here in East Point, they say a lot of their calls are mental health. And so we do understand homeless is a factor, mental health is a factor, factor, military, our, our veterans are also a factor, dealing with homeless and mental health issues. And I think sometimes we miss the mark in dealing with them. Arresting, arresting homeless people is not an answer. We should be able to deal with these factors in better ways, giving and providing wraparound services. And I know a lot of those are county issues, but we still, as a city, need to find, work outside the box to help with our policing, to our police department, to make sure that these factors are dealt with. So that is my answer to that. I think, oh, I'm sorry. Thank you.
Thank you. Next question, Mr. Simeon, Ward A.
Thank you, Kathy, again. Atlanta is the business airport in the world, and one of the largest and as well as the most efficient. It has very close proximity to East Point, brings in billions of dollars. What is your vision to bring some of that business to East Point? I mean, you can't have Atlanta Airport in your backyard without getting some revenue. Of course, we know about Airport West, but what is your vision to attracting businesses to invest worldwide? I love that East Point has a small-town feel, but I want us to have a global vision.
That question will go to Mr. Bangston.
Yes, so in your, in your question, you stated that the Atlanta Airport is the most efficient. And I think that contributes to largely the success of the Atlanta Airport. And so I believe that in order to bring more business to the city of East Point, it begins in making the city of East Point more efficient to do business with. And I think that starts with optimizing our processes. As an auditor, I believe that you go to the people, to the businesses that have had trouble, trouble, problems here in our permitting processes, also engaging the contractors that do business here, but contractors that don't do business here, so that we can understand the inefficiencies in our governmental processes. And I think that as we become a more efficient city, we'll be able to engage more efficiently and effectively with some of those larger businesses, and we can make East Point more attractive to bring business here to the city. Thank you so much.
Thank you. I'm going to, I have a question that's come up in the chat, and I'm going to pose this question to Ward D. This question is for Mr. Butler, and the question is, what is your plan to improve city service delivery?
Well, Ms. Adams, thank you for the question, and I thank you for the question in the chat. So when we start talking about city service delivery, that's a very broad, broad question. And we should tackle it on department basis. So let's start with our plan in the zoning and our permitting, where people seem to have the most complaints. Well, let's talk about what we have done. So we, the elected officials, hear the complaints about what's happening, and we make steps to try to correct those complaints. We instituted a new automated system. Now, it still has some growing pains. We have to get the staff up on everything that that can do, and we also have to train the business community. But what we did do in order to make that more efficient, we had a series of charrettes where we invited new business people for entire two months to come in to learn about the new zoning process. And so when we start looking at other city services, one thing that we did not do with our trash delivery, those people did not take one day off during COVID. And we have to applaud them for that. But how do we improve that? Is by upgrading the equipment. We've recently purchased new sweepers, and that street sweeping started on October 11th, so I know a lot of neighbors are looking forward to that. And when we look at the police and fire departments, we have reduced the insurance rates so that we could be more competitive to attract more police officers. So when we start talking about improving efficiencies for the city, it's important that we look at each department. And if you look at what we have done as a council, we're continuing to move the city forward. Now, we know every department has room for improvements, but this council is dedicated to continuing to make East Point better. You just have to think about where we were and where we are today, and you know that we have been doing the job.
Thank you, thank you very much. Now, I have another question that's come out of the chat, and I'm gonna pose that to, let me see, I think everyone's had two questions. We're gonna start with a third question here, I'm gonna start with Ms. Cummings. But this is around taxes, and I hope I've got this question right. It says the current permitting is horrible. Tax-paying residents are put, are being put through the wringer to update and upgrade their homes. What's your vision to help offset that?
Okay, I know that's a big complaint about just the city services, and I know when you wanna have different things such as rooms put on or making a business to the home. I think first of all, that we need to look at the, the system that we currently have in place. We need to look at the, what, what those problems are, and then we have to go in internally with members, with the supervisors, those people that actually provide those services, and find out what we can do to better service the residents of East Point. If there's an issue with communication, I know in the midst of the pandemic, there are some times where you may not have the members actually in the office, so what you have to do is you have to communicate via telephone, via, through the computer. So we need, what we need to do is make sure that, that, that system that they do have in place, that it's an efficient system. We need to make sure that we're getting in contact with people. If there are questions or concerns, it should be, it shouldn't be a two- or three-day turnaround with regards to getting information back to the, to the homeowners or to the people that are soliciting, that are trying to get permits. We need to be able to effectively and efficiently getting back, get back in contact with these, with the homeowners or the builders or whoever it is that's trying to get these permits done. Once we go in and we, internally, we find out what those problems are, what the concerns are, then what we'll do is we'll work to find out those ways that we can make the process run more smoothly. And make sure that we keep everyone in the loop for what's going on. If people are not physically in the office, and if there's a way that you, if you're supposed to do our communications through, through the computer system, just make sure that it's, it's gonna be a user-friendly system that's been put in place so that everyone is able to assess, assess the system and be able to get the information that they need. But I think the biggest thing with everyone is, is making sure that we have that constant communication. It shouldn't be a two, three-day turnaround time as far as just to even get a response back if you can move forward with a project where someone is coming out. So I think the biggest thing is just make sure that we keep that constant communication, make sure that we have a user-friendly system in place as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Got another question in the chat. Says Karen Renee stated that social workers should be hired to aid the police and to deal with folk with mental illnesses. I know that some other cities are already doing this. What are your thoughts on that? Ms. McLaughlin.
So it's interesting that the incumbent here, Renee, would bring that up, because I am a mental health, homeless rights, and mass, and advocate for ending mass incarceration. And so I live, I have lived experience with mental health, and I advocate every day, and I have been advocating for the last thirteen years around the rights of those with mental health. There are organizations such as PADS. There's also, I've been advocating throughout my platform, you know, on my platform and throughout this campaign, I've been saying that mental health first aid, trauma-informed care, and suicide prevention should be mandatories for all first responders. One, because it impacts them as whatever they take on every day, including CNAs and RNs, who are often left behind inside of the conversation of the firemen and the police officers. But what, what they take in, what they see every day as lived experience, and what they take on with interacting with those who may have mental health, who may have been impacted by mass incarceration, who may have PTSD and be a veteran. Like, so I believe that we need these wraparound services for all first responders, and we need them for our community, and we definitely- and we need them for our community, and we definitely need them inside of our schools.
Thank you. Thank you so much. I have another question from the chat. Says please outline what problems you see and what you plan to do to improve the power service stability in the city, early the city infrastructure. That question is for Mr. Butler.
Thank you, Ms. Adams. And I tell you, as this as incumbent city councilman, the only thing that kept me up at night is water and worried about busted pipes. And I tell you what we have done in regards to our infrastructure. We have pipes that have been in the ground for seventy years and administrations in the past chose to ignore that. Let me tell you what this council has done. For three years, we lobbied at the state Capitol to get an option sales tax passed. And I am proud to say that our state legislators with William Bodie and um Senator Halpern got us a option sales tax pass. So now you get to vote on that next year. And then with that, we get to pay for that infrastructure with tax dollars coming from people shopping in our community. It's phenomenal. The second thing is, under the proposed federal government budget, more money is there for infrastructure. So when we start talking about our infrastructure needs, my chief concern is the water. And we have made steps to correct that issue by getting that tax passed and with the future dollars that we see from the federal government. And so water has always been, keeps me up at night, Ms. Adams. But we finally have a way to pay for it, so we are moving in the right direction. And I'm so happy and proud about that um here in East Point.
Thank you. Thank you very much. I'm gonna move back to Ward A. Mr. Simeon, if you would, ask the next question, please.
Thank you, Ms. Adams. Uh for candidate for Ward A, um if you received a million dollars in grant use for the city and you could use it any way you wanted to, what would you do with it and why?
Uh that goes to Councilwoman Shropshire.
Thank you. And um that's a great question. And we've received grant money um from the the county. What I would use for that money is to help our residents for their mortgage rental utility bills. That's what I would do with it if we um if we received, and and we have, we received money. Uh so with that money, I would use it for the residents to provide, um to help provide to them because we're in the middle of a pandemic, we're still there, and there are people who are still struggling with their um mortgages and their rental as well as utility bills. Because as you see, um people are not working. Um so it is hard and it's a struggle for them. So if I received a million dollars, if the city, not me per se, it has to be given to the city. So we have to make a clear distinction between that. If it's donated, if it if it's given to the city, that is what I would prefer or recommend that the city use it for is for residents to help them. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm gonna move down to Ward D. Ms. Dean, if you would, ask the next question, please.
Yes, um and I think going back to to have uh one of the candidates that didn't ask the question or answer the question about transparency and how the transparency between the elected and the constituents would improve.
Okay, that question will go to uh Mr. Fields.
Thank you. Uh transparency, so when I think about transparency, I think of a couple of things. It's transparency from your uh your your uh representative to the community for your uh the actions that you've done uh and how you have represented. And then I think about the transparency from the city, from the city to its uh residents. So let me start by saying that um as your representative, what I say and what I do and what I tell you will be the same thing. And I think it's important for us to uh put that on the table, that I won't go before a builder and say something different that's that's going to sound good to the builder and then go before the residents and tell the residents something else. Transparency means that you, in fact, uh put your cards on the table. Transparency means when you are getting into a game, uh and in this case into politics in the city of East Point, you showed that you were, in fact, um able to do so and not do it later on. That's transparency. Transparency means that when you say that you have solely done something and it is not true, then that is not transparent and that is not a representative that you want. So when I'm in office, I will absolutely tell you the things that you um you should know. Um in addition to that, uh my records will be uh completely transparent. If you have questions about my credit card bill, uh it's there. I have a stable job for twenty-eight years with the Delta and I don't need the East Point money, uh taxpayers' money to to do my job uh for the city of East Point. So um I will be completely open to uh whatever questions that you have, uh especially around um how we uh take our tax dollars and use them in the city of East Point.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Next, I'm gonna move to uh Ward B. Uh Mr. Tucker, if you will, uh ask the next question.
Thank you, Ms. Adams. Uh and I believe this is true across the board, but for me, uh definitely. Um so East Point taxes have surpassed Fulton County taxes for the first time last year. Do you think our millet rate should be decreased and what should the the city should be doing with the increased revenue from the uh from the taxes?
And that question goes to uh Councilwoman Renee.
Well, the millet rate, um we lowered our millet rate um several years ago, I think to thirteen point four five. And um in doing so, we realized that Fulton County and the school board had increased theirs. And in East Point, because we have been doing a great job getting rid of um uh abandoned homes, um making the city uh more attractive for homeowners and buyers. And so we knew that the property values would increase and therefore the taxes on uh people who have been living here a long time, property value would increase as well. My projection is, and this is my proposal to the council, is that homeowners should, if anything, take uh should have a break. We do not wanna tax out working families. So I propose that we take another look at at uh increasing the homestead tax exemption. And with that, uh home homeowners would would reap the entire benefit and not people who are just buying up properties to increase renters uh in the city. And then turn around and you could also increase property values, I mean uh property taxes, the the millet rate. But when you increase the uh homesteading uh homestead tax um um homestead tax uh for homeowners, it will benefit all homeowners in East Point and people who choose to live here and buy here uh as um homeowners. I think that will be a better solution for all of us.
Thank you. Thank you very much. I'm gonna ask a question from the chat. And uh it says, East Point is budgeted to bring in a lot more money in property taxes next year. How do you plan to spend this money that we didn't have before? And that goes to Mr. Mitchell, Ward D. Okay, let me.
He's muted.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, I do.
Okay. First, I want to do a needs assessment. Um we need to take care of our first responders, make sure that they have the resources and equipment needed. Also, I would like to think of what other uh programs we could to help our vulnerable population, this includes the seniors. Uh is it something as simple as, you know, uh grants or simple, um we make sure that they live in their safe homes, make sure that their homes are injured deficient, make sure we have someone that can help them with their yard work. Uh also other programs we could look into uh for the youth. Make sure um they have the resources they they need to be successful later on in life. Make sure that we give them a good basis uh for them to succeed. Um personally, I do like the food program, so I'm all about uh a lot, a lot of uh some citizens are undernourished or um don't have access to fresh fruits and vegetables. I would like to start a program to make uh that more accessible. These things actually dictate a lot about your public health, I mean your your health outcomes. But there there's a multitude of things we could look into and look into how we allocate our money now and uh do an assessment, a needs assessment, and see what we can be done there.
All right. Well, thank you very much. This is our last question for this evening. And uh Mr. Simeon, if you would, ask that question uh for Ward A.
Thank you again, Ms. Adams. Um candidate for Ward A, in order to have a a if uh an effective city, you need an effective council, city council. And I wanna know what skills do you bring to the city councils that says that you can work with the city council, even though you represent one ward, you represent East Point as well? But in order for to move forward effectively as a city, we have to be have an effective city council. And I've seen many city councils around the state and around the country that just doesn't work out because everybody got their own personal agenda and cannot work with each other. What do you bring to say that you have the skill set to work with the city council to make us a more effective city?
Mr. Bangston.
Yes, thank you for the question. So I've uh been an auditor for uh over five years now. And I've worked with a number of international businesses and medium-sized businesses uh over those years. And I currently work for a healthcare organization in the metro Atlanta area. So in in order to establish an effective council, I think it is first in understanding the vision for the city. So under creating and making sure that we have a vision and building consensus around the vision and in in building consensus, understand the facts and the metrics behind the vision that we wish to uh get and obtain as a city. So it's first, it is first understanding the city, uh understanding the vision that the city has for itself and understand to understand the numbers and the metrics and to bring under bring consensus around the things that we say we wish to do. So one it is, one, understanding the vision that the city wants, understanding those numbers and metrics, and then building consensus, uh being honest and transparent about what it will take to do those things and and being willing to do the work to realize the things that we wish to realize, but continue to do the work so that we don't recognize any negative impacts uh that think that we could have. So it is an understanding, um understanding the vision and understanding the opportunity and the risk and then making sure that we guard their opportunities in a way that we also mitigate risk in the process. Thank you, Simeon. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Now ladies and gentlemen, we've just heard from uh participating with us this evening. Each of those candidates have had three questions each. They've not all had the same questions. They've had a variety of questions, and uh the reason that we chose to make uh to ask them in random order is because uh they want to uh serve as a public servant. They get questions from constituents in random order, and they're not always teed up and they're not always easy. So we wanted to prevent uh provide you with an environment similar to that. So now we'd like to hear from each of the candidates. We'll give them each two minutes for their closing statement. Share with the viewers, with your voters this evening, how they can get in contact with you, uh how you wanna close this out. Do you have a website if they wanna vote, wanna donate? Um it's up to you. I'm gonna go in order by ward and then um we'll go from there. So I'm gonna start with um with Ward A and the candidates in Ward A with uh Councilwoman Shropshire and then uh with Mr. Bangston. Uh Councilwoman.
Thank you. And um thank you, um Ms. Adams. Thank you, um Bishop Fan. And thank you for the NAACP for putting on this um forum. It um it brings awareness to the community and um it's good. Um for my close, I have been a resident of East Point for thirty-six years. Fifteen of those years, I listened to the resident, I worked with them. I was an advocate for them on their behalf because I feel that everyone deserves fair and equal. So I'm a good listener and I'm a good ad advocate. I advocate for things. I bring things to the table and I work with my council members as well as the mayor to make sure that we get things done for the resident. Every election cycle has a reset button. Your ward has a reset and your at-large has a reset. And when you hit that reset, you stop the progress that is already going on. Change is good sometimes, but change is not always good when you're hitting the reset button and you're stopping the progress and the work that's already going on. So what I ask the residents is to vote for me for another four years so we don't stop the progress. We can continue to advance East Point to the next level. We're advancing our Commons area and we're advancing our downtown, and we will continue to grow. Once you make that change and hit that reset button, that person has to come in and understand what's going on. They're not gonna be up to speed within that timeframe. So we must continue on the path that we're on, and that's continuing to grow the city to where the city should be, to its best potentials, its best height, to make it a live, work and play area for all residents. All residents, not some, but all, because we want to grow together. So I ask that we.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, Councilwoman. Her time was up. Next, I'm gonna go to Mr. Bangston. Mr. Bangston, if you will, give us your closing statement.
Yes, thank you. The councilwoman has lived in the community for thirty-six years, started speaking at council meetings fifteen years before being on council, now serving for eight years. Let the record show that is twenty-three years of city government influence, twenty-three years. And this is what we have realized. Unoptimized governmental processes giving businesses and homeowners a hard time, a police force that struggles to retain officers. Just last night, we learned that another code enforcement officer recently resigned. But moreover, a culture that that takes the unhopeful position, uh I'll believe it when I see it. Let's not press the reset button and realize these same things again. The next four years, East Point, it's our time for change. Change is possible when when leaders listen, listen to their constituents by doing the work that is necessary to achieve the things the citizens wish to achieve. Furthermore, change is possible when you're governed by hope, knowing that optimism is possible. Let's be optimistic about our future. That's the change we need. Please visit ElijahBangston.com for more information. And on November second, vote Bangston, Ward A at large. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you. Next, we're gonna move into Ward B and uh Councilwoman Karen Renee, please.
Thank you, and uh thank you for this opportunity to join you tonight in this great forum. Um I just wanna um throw out a few accomplishments um where we have uh come from in the last few years. Uh we have secured over one million dollars for utilities, rent and mortgage assistance to help East Pointers get through this pandemic. We've secured over three million investment in safety, uh including salary increases, incentives um for equipment and uh smart technologies for our first responders, including um aiding our dispatch, body cameras and uh laptops, tag readers, cameras, gunshot detective systems for the city, bringing us into uh the new millennium. Um over fourteen million in street repaving and sidewalks installation, over two million in federal infrastructure funds for aging water infrastructures, over five hundred million dollars in economic and economic development uh within the city, twenty thousand dollars in grants from the Kaufman Fast Track Entrepreneurship Course provided to twenty East Pointers entrepreneurs. Over hu- a hundred and thirty-two thousand four hundred dollars in grants for from um the U.S. Environment Protection Agency. Three hundred thousand awarded in Ward B for the Brownsville Grants for our EPA uh cleaning up polluted um warehouses and our polluted uh grounds. Coordinated with the uh Georgia Department of Transportation Board members to install high-intensity activity crosswalks of the HAWK system for our downtown district, park repairs and renovations and new recreation amenities throughout the city. These are no easy tasks uh to help turn our government system down. When we came on um in two thousand fourteen, what we heard the residents say, we needed um better policing more uh to lower our crime. We did that. Our crime is down twelve percent in the city. We heard our residents say, we are. We heard our residents say, we are tired of these abandoned homes in our city, blighted properties. We came on and we helped fix the problems. These are some of the questions that have not been asked, you know why? Because we are handling those issues that are major to our constituents and our residents. So what happens is when they ask us for.
Okay, thank you, Councilwoman, your time is up. Next, we're gonna move into, uh, Ward B with Shante McLaughlin.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone, um, who's hosted this meeting tonight, this forum tonight, thank you for everyone who's attended. So I would like to say this. I am not a current elected official. Once again, I am not N O T, a current elected official. However, I've consulted regarding legislation regarding the solitary confinement laws here in Georgia. I'm currently consulting with Peace America, the Taylor English Law Firm regarding the, um, public laws regarding the voter suppression, voter participation laws. I've consulted on litigation regarding mental health and mental wellbeing with Senator Gonzala James. I've worked with various elected officials, I've hosted neighborhood cleanups. I've worked with Keep America Beautiful, I've worked helping the elderly, um, secure their, um, social security. I've even worked to help get sex offenders off the streets by providing them jobs and employment. And that may be radical to some, but that's better than them living in the woods and possibly impacting someone's children. So I say all of this to say, if I could do these things without being an elected official, what could I do being an elected official? During COVID, I helped to feed over fifty communities with, um, the organize, with an organization that's located off of Powell Mill. Partnering with Councilman Roger Gay out of College Park to provide food for their, um, for their food bank. It's off of, um, Herschel Road. And I have met with, you know, what, Dina, um, I can't even remember Ingram, the mayor. And I've asked repeatedly, I've said Karen Renee, if you'd like to work right now, because work right, starts right now, we can work together right now to implement things. I have a meeting on Friday with the leader of one of the Water Voice groups who happens to be a girl to start looking at programs that can be put in place so that they can stop spitting on cars and pulling out guns and do, and, and rolling up blunts on the side of the road, impacting their future. So the work starts now. If I have been able to do these things without being in office, imagine what I could do being in office. My name is Shante McLaughlin, vote for me now.
Thank you so much, thank you, your time has ended. Next, we're going to, uh, move in towards C and start with the, well, with T-Star Cummings, Ms. Cummings.
Thank you, thank you, Ms. Adams, um, Bishop Fan and NAACP for allowing us the opportunity, um, to for everyone to meet, um, the candidates, uh, so I do appreciate that opportunity. Uh, again, my name is T-Star Cummings and I'm running for Ward C at large for the city of East Point. I feel that East Point, it's a great city with unlimited potential for growth. Um, and I wanna be that leader that continues to move the city in a positive direction. Um, it takes a collaborative effort to mitigate any situation in the fire service, it could be a EMS call, a structured fire or hazmat situation, but it all, it takes a team effort. We all have to work together to make sure that we, um, accomplish those goals. So what I wanna do is to take that same effort, that same, um, system that we use in the fire service to continue to work with the, uh, members of the council, with the mayor and the city manager, to continue to move the city, uh, forward in a positive direction. I'm asking everyone to come out on November second and even now during the early voting and vote for me, T-Star Cummings, Ward C at large for the city of East Point, and everyone remember, the future is bright in the city of East Point, we need everybody to get out and vote for a star. You can always contact me on my website, the, um, it's T as in Tom, star, S T R, S T A R R, the number four, eastpoint.com, that's gonna be T-Star for eastpoint.com, thank you so much, everyone, have a great evening.
Thank you, thank you very much. Next, we're gonna move into Ward D and we're gonna start with the incumbent, um, Councilman Butler, Jo- Joshua Butler.
Thank you so much. I'm gonna continue where my colleagues stopped with all of the accomplishments we have done in the past four years. We have brought in the Microsoft Data Center, we have attracted Porsche to our, we've worked with the nonprofit Amazing Stories to provide jobs. We have a new city hall, we were paying half a million dollars in rent and now that money goes direct, directly into our own city hall saving taxpayers' dollars. We have a new fire station, we have done the work. Bishop Fan, I told you, four years, my favorite Bible verse was, and we, and ye shall do the work. We have done the work at this council, we have done things individually and we have done things collectively. Vote for Joshua B. Butler the fourth coming up on November second because we are continuing to move East Point forward with positive politics.
All right, well, thank you, thank you. We're gonna, uh, continue to move forward and our next candidate that we're gonna hear from is Mark Fields.
Thank you, uh, Ms. Adams, uh, thank you Bishop Fan and the panelists, and thank you then to the, uh, NAACP for putting on this forum. Uh, my name is Mark Fields, I'm running for city council Ward D at large because, um, I do think that our city has a great potential and we can continue to work and improve. We are seeing sidewalks going in, now we need to gird our city, uh, those, the, the neighborhoods, uh, and make sure that those sidewalks are being used to attract us down to a, a business in the downtown area that, um, anyone can, can, uh, visit. Uh, you're gonna make sure, I'll make sure that uh, when you are talking to me, you're going to know exactly what I think. Uh, I will tell you honestly what I'm, how I understand something and I'm going to listen to you. I'll make sure that I represent our residents, uh, in a respectful way and I will take up my fiduciary responsibilities seriously. You won't question whether I am, uh, being, uh, truthful and, uh, and I will work with the entire council. I've done that both in my career at Delta Airlines, I've done it on the building authority, I've done it with the Washington Road Neighbors Association and I've done it with, uh, the, the council. You have, uh, seen, uh, our neighborhood association, uh, collectively go down and address issues for the city and I wanna do that for the entire city. You can contact me on markforeeastpoint.com, M A R K for eastpoint.com. Um, I look forward to hearing from you, uh, early voting started today and I will continue on through the twenty-ninth and vote for Mark Fields on November second, thank you.
Thank you, thank you very much. And next we'll hear from candidate Tremaine Mitchell, Mr. Mitchell.
Yes, so first I would like to thank Bishop Fan and Ms. Adams for, uh, inviting me to this forum. But as of right now, um, now it's time to be focused, we do not need to be distracted, we're in the midst of a pandemic. Um, we definitely need to be focused on others and how, how we can use our resources uh, to help others get through this hard time. Uh, we need to, I will fight for everyone, every day, I will share the credit, I will work with my colleagues to, uh, get the results that we need. Also, um, I will take care of our vulnerable population, I will help to build our middle class and I will also look out for the underprivileged. I've talked with many of you, um, you said that East Point can do better and I believe that wholeheartedly. If you would like to know more about my vision, you can visit votetremainmitche.com uh, and vote me as your next city councilman for Ward E.
Thank you, thank you very much, Mr. Mitchell. Well, thank you to all of the candidates for taking time out of your busy schedules to, uh, to participate in tonight's forum. And, uh, in closing, I wanna say to each of the, the viewers, the voters, the constituents of the city of East Point, you've just heard from some of the qualified candidates vying to serve as city council members in the city of East Point. Whomever is elected will serve a four-year term that begins January first of two thousand twenty-two and ends on December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-five. And their future lies in your hands. So as a constituent and a voter of the city of East Point, it is our hope that you will use your vote as your voice to elect fair representation. And remember these dates. Following, uh, are some of the most important dates, early voting started today and that was mentioned earlier, runs through the twenty-ninth of October. So early voting in person begins, uh, began. October twenty-second is the deadline to request an absentee ballot. November second is election day, make sure you participate in this, uh, and do your civic duty and vote. Vote for the candidate of choice, but vote for the best qualified candidate. And then as a resident of the city of East Point, you owe it to yourself, your family, your neighbors, to help elect again qualified public servants to help develop and govern this great city. Now, no one said anything about the elephant in the room. No one talked about all this noise abatement going on, we talked about the neighbor, you know, the airport, the world's busiest airport, but no one talked about the noise that it brings and the issues that it has and its cause for the residents, the long-term residents, long-time residents. Put that under your cap. But I leave, in closing, I'll leave you with this. Be an educated and informed voter. Know before you go. Know who is on the ballot. Know what is on the ballot, if there are issues, if there are referendums or what have you. Know when to vote and know where to vote. But more so than anything, please exercise your right to vote. Thank you and thank you again, now I'm gonna turn it back over, uh, the forum back over to, uh, Reverend Greg Fan.
Thank you so much, Kathy, we appreciate you and your moderating and I wanna thank every one of the panelists. I wanna give you guys a great big hand for a great job that you did tonight, thank you so, so very, very much. And I thank all of the candidates that came tonight to offer yourself, uh, for public service. It's not easy, standing before people and telling people what it is, they may wanna hear, may not wanna hear, but we're thanking you for offering yourself a public service. And if God's will and you should win, and you should win, believe you me, Greg Fan the preacher man will be on your case if you ain't doing what you're supposed to be doing, which is saying, okay? So thank you again, so very much, God bless you, y'all have a great evening. Richie, you wanna close out by saying something from the NAACP?
Sure, so we wanna thank, uh, we wanna thank, again, thank the, thank, uh, Ms. Adams, the moderator, the other questions from, who, uh, volunteered their services. Uh, thank people who watched, of course, and, uh, and, uh, you know, I wanna make note of the people who came, uh, the candidates who were here and the candidates who were not here. I think those are notable, uh, candidates should come before the, the, uh, the, the constituency, come before the, the populace and make them, uh, and tell who they are and why they should represent you. But thank you all who, who came, uh, I thought it was a great forum, thanks for watching. Uh, it's on our Facebook Live, you can come back and look at it. Candidates can go back and look at themselves and, uh, and, uh, see whether, whether you satisfied what you did or not, but I think y'all did a great job, thank you so much for your time.
Absolutely, thank you, everyone.